Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the Castro Valley Unified School District's Board Meeting. I am going to call our meeting to order and hand it over to Pardine Amadi, our superintendent for our oath of office.
Yes, welcome, everyone. It is my pleasure to participate in this wonderful event. And we are going to actually perform the oath of office for our three new reelected, one reelected and two new elected trustees. So with that, I will say the word, and then you can just repeat after me. Would you please raise your right hand as you do that? So we will start with Ms. Dolly Adams. Have the medical order.
Okay.
Ready? Okay. I, Dolly Adams.
I, Dolly Adams.
Solemnly swear.
Solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
To the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
And that I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right, next, it's Mr. Kuziak, Michael Kuziak.
Hello, may my son join me right next to me?
Yeah, sure.
Over Teddy. Here you go.
Jay.
Okay.
Hi Teddy. I, Michael Kuziak.
I, Michael Kuziak.
Solemnly swear.
Solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
Oh no.
You want me to start all over?
I didn't hear the oath. Let's start over again, yeah.
Okay.
I, Michael Kuziak, solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of Califor- the State of California.
The Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
The Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservations.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
And that I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I'm about to enter.
Congratulations.
Thank you. You did it.
And now, Ms. Lavender Whitaker.
I, Lavender Whitaker.
I, Lavender Whitaker.
Solemnly swear.
Solemnly swear.
That I will support and defend.
That I will support and defend.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance.
To the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
And the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation.
Without any mental reservation.
Or purpose of evasion.
Or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully.
And that I will well and faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Upon which I am about to enter.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you all, and welcome to our new members. Appreciate it. Thank you for Pardine. For those of you on the line, we will, we want to thank you for coming and watching our new members join us today. We will be moving to item IC, public comment regarding closed session items. So if there is public comment, we're only taking comments on conference with legal counsel anticipated legal litigation and negotiations or the personnel report. So if your comments do not have to do with that, we will be coming back at 5:30 for open session. And seeing that I have no hands raised, we will recess to closed session and be back to open session at the same number at 5:30. We thank you all for joining us, and have a good evening. Again, this is the Castro Valley Unified School District Board Meeting, and we will be starting just shortly. It looks like we have everyone here, so we will reconvene to open session. Thank you for joining us for the Castro Valley Unified School District Board Meeting. And do we have, we do have Shane with us this evening. Shane, it's so nice to see that you're here with us.
How you doing? Welcome, Dolly and Mike.
That's great.
Thank you.
We'll move on to item 3B, Shane, since you're here. And if you could lead us in the pledge of allegiance, that'd be great. Thank you.
All right. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Shane. And reporting out from closed session, the board did not take any action. And we'll move on to item 3D, approval of the agenda. And this is an amended agenda.
I mean, yes, it is. Personnel doc was amended.
Thank you.
I'll move approval of the agenda as amended.
I can second that.
Okay.
Moved and seconded. Shane, your preferential vote?
Yes.
All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Motion passes by zero. We'll move on to the admission statement. Trustee Theodore.
In partnership with the community, Castro Valley Unified School District educates students in a learning environment that is safe, nurturing, and culturally responsive. Students are guided in by excellence-inspired staff utilizing innovative instruction, curricula, and technology.
Thank you, Doc. For those of you who are on the line with us, we do want to read our statement about public comment. The board respects and encourages the public comment to comment on matters on the board agenda and within the board's jurisdiction. The board fully supports civil discourse and requests that everyone respect each other and their point of view. Individuals who would like to address the board must raise your hand during the start of the agenda item. To comment by video conference, click the Raise Your Hand button, and to comment by phone, raise your hand by pressing star nine. To request to speak when public comment is being taken on the eligible agenda item, you will then be unmuted during your turn and allowed to make public comments. After the allotted time, you will then be remuted. Individual speakers are asked to limit their comments to no more than three minutes. There are up to thirty minutes of public comment allowed on each agenda item. With board consensus, the president may increase or decrease the time allowed. This meeting is being recorded to prepare the official minutes. Well Shane, we'll move on to item four, Student Board Report. What's going on?
We have a lot of really cool things going on. The high school ASB officers are planning a virtual winter assembly for when we return from break. High School has worked with several local restaurants to organize fundraisers for school activities at Mod Pizza and Panda Express. Canyon hosted a virtual movie watch party a few days ago. Canyon Web has continued to organize virtual events for the sixth graders. Castro Valley High School Choir held their virtual One Voice Winter Concert on the 11th. And Castro Valley Trojan Time and SCL Committees are working to implement more anti-racist lessons.
Shane, it sounds like a lot of stuff is going on. Thanks for sharing. We will move on to the California School Employees Association and Castro Valley Teachers Association reports. See? Do we have Robin with us from CSCA Today?
Sorry, President Whitaker, I already brought her in.
Oh, you did. Hi. Robin, welcome. I was looking for you on the list to bring you over frantically, but you're here. Please proceed.
I am. Well, I bring greetings from CSCA Chapter 52, Castro Valley, to the Superintendent Zamadi, our new board members, the board as the whole, members of Castro Valley Community, Family, and VIPs all. Let's be real. We are looking forward to the continuing to work, the work of cooperation begun by previous board members. As you are well aware, or you will be so very soon, the footsteps and shoes that you start, are starting your travels in are large and are indeed grounded, well-rooted here. We extend our best wishes for the coming year and our gratitude for the opportunity to continue the work of Castro Valley Unified in serving our community, providing the essential services, clerical, mechanical, security, safety, instructional support, and all the many varieties. We welcome the opportunities that 2021 will bring and the opportunities to get to know you each better. We have our officers in place for the following year, and I'm happy to report that we have a much fuller board than we have had in the last two years. So, we're thrilled, so. We're off.
Well, thank you so much, Robin, and thank you to all the CSCA team, and we wish you happy holidays.
And to you.
Now, I'm, I don't know if going to bring over Mark Maladnich from CVTA. Hello, Mark. Mark, are you with us? There you are. Maybe not. Do you want to give you a chance to speak, Mark? You went off mute.
Hello, hello, am I still on?
There you are. Welcome, Mark.
Right when you said my name, I was kicked off, so I don't know what happened. I just got fired. This stuff, I don't know what's going on here, but, you know, thank you. So, yeah, good evening, and first and foremost, congratulations to Trustee Adams and Trustee Kuziak. Thank you for stepping up and taking on this challenge, and it is going to be a challenge. I look forward to working with both of you, so congratulations. Unlike Shane, I do not have a lot to report tonight. Our staff is doing everything in their capacity to serve our students. Our CVTA leadership team is working with the district at the bargaining table. We are all doing everything we can to do our jobs and serve our roles despite the setbacks that this pandemic has caused. I hope that all of you have a wonderful holiday season, and that when we meet again in 2021, it will be the beginning of a much more positive and healthy year. I was thinking of doing like a, like, oh, this is what happened in 2020, but I started listing everything. I was just like, you know what, I don't even want to go there, so. Let's, here's to 2021, and thank you all for your service. It is much appreciated by CVTA. Thank you very much, and good night.
Thank you, Mark, and happy holidays to all the teachers, and Happy New Year. Now, just so the public knows, we have a hand raised, and this is, the next item is for items not on the agenda. So if you have your hand raised for items that are on the agenda, you will only take comments during that agenda item. So, if you do not, so we have received a request to speak for an item not on the agenda. Please note that the board can listen, but we cannot discuss or take action on the issue presented to comply with the Brown Act. So, given that, I will allow Liz McCarthy to speak with us today.
Oh my goodness. Hi.
Hello, Liz.
How are you?
You, please proceed.
Well, I really didn't know that I pushed this button, but I guess I will take my three minutes. Wow. Um, and I hope I, I say all the right things. You know what I really, would really like to say is I am the Program Specialist for Special Education for the pre- for the preschool and elementary programs. And I guess I can just give a quick comment in that I get to observe some Zoom calls, class calls, I get to be in meetings. I've even started helping with some assessments on kiddos, and I just want to remind the board something that you already know, that there really are some amazing teachers and wonderful things going on, even though it is such a hard time for the kids and teachers are just working so hard. But I have really seen some wonderful moments and a lot of even still seeing some aha moments and times when teachers are having to, you know, have some really hard lessons and tough lessons, yet getting their point and their standards and everything well thought and maneuvered. So I just, even though this was a mistake, I guess I'm glad I got to say that. Start out positive. We really have a wonderful, wonderful group of teachers. Thanks.
Thank you, Liz. I'm going to bring over Rebecca and Leifert. Rebecca and Leifert?
It's Leifert.
Sorry, Leifert.
That's okay, no problem. All right, I'm gonna keep this short and sweet. Um, I don't agree with you guys' self-assessment, which seems very self-congratulatory. But here's the real point. My daughter is not being served at all by the school. The Zoom is nothing to her because of her special needs. It's a complete waste of time. We're gonna, we're gonna take her out of the school if you guys can't do something better, and we're gonna homeschool her. And my hope is just that you guys lose funds from that because you've done a really bad job. And honestly, it was really disheartening to listen to you guys self-congratulate. Really disheartening. So, that's it. I don't want to debate with you. I'm just telling you straight up, I've not been served. Ella's been hurt, and I'm done with it.
And she's regressing.
This is Ella's mother, Rebecca.
She's, she's gaining weight. She's losing her ability to tell us and communicate to us that she has to go to the bathroom. I mean, it's really, really.
The bottom line is, it's not working. So, do better, or we're out. That's it. Peace. Don't go back to congratulating Ella.
Thank you for your comment. We appreciate it. I'm going to mute your line. And I will bring us back to the next agenda item, which is the consent agenda, and this is an action item.
I'll move approval of the consent agenda.
Second.
Been moved and seconded. Shane, your preferential vote?
Yes.
All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. I will move us on to item eight, Reports, Discussion, and Action Items. Item A, Roadmap to Reopening and Safety Plan Update. Pardine.
Yes, thank you. Um, let's see. Here we go. Um, next slide, please. I don't think this is a surprise to anyone, so I'll just go over the next couple of slides quickly. We are in the purple. And as you see, Mark's right here, it shows where we are with case rates and positivity rates. And as we look at this, I just keep, you know, we all have to keep asking to please follow all the rules so that we do a better job and get out of purple. Next slide is just another, you know, indication of where we are. As you see, you know, the seven-day average case rate per hundred K for Alameda County. And if you remember, we were doing really, really well before Thanksgiving. So, next. Um, so the regional stay-at-home order that you have all heard about, December 3rd, the state implemented this order. And basically, this would go in effect, they said, when a region's ICU availability falls below fifteen percent, although that's not where all counties are. And our county has been actually following the regional stay-at-home order. December 4th, the Health Officer for the County of, for Alameda, Contra Costa, we're in San Francisco, and Santa Clara, all jointly announced that they are implementing the stay-at-home order regardless, just because of how bad things were through January 4th. Next. So, how does this impact CVUSD? Learning hubs continue to serve students in person in small cohorts under this order. So none of that has changed, but I do want to say a few things about that. I, there has been some amazing work tracking and tracing while we've had the hubs. Again, I want to start, obviously, by thanking our classified members and those who are in our hubs. But the excellent job that our staff has done with tracing and tracking has basically resulted in no known workplace transmission in CVUSD. And remember, we have hubs in every single school, and we are one of the very few school districts that have that in Alameda County for all of our schools, and it's been an absolute, I'm in awe of what the team has been able to do. And I can tell you, just this part of the work really requires a lot of just on-the-go making decisions, but following exactly what we have in our plan and criteria and being very, very careful. So, I want to give kudos to our team. I want to thank Sherri Beats, Dustin Gachuru, Nick McMaster, and our nurses, and Gary and the Facilities Department. I mean, it's just an amazing job everyone has done to track, trace, and track. And our administrators at the site and folks at the site who are with the hubs. So it's going really well. However, out of abundance of caution, again, we, we are not told to close them. We have not had any cases. However, out of abundance of caution, and as an additional precaution because of the winter break and knowing that we really, we are going to ask people to please follow the guidelines, but just having seen what happened at Thanksgiving, not necessarily in our school district, but just in general, that we are going to close, the hubs are open this week, but we are going to keep them closed for just one week after the break. We are hoping, and our goal is to open on January 11th, obviously. So we are informing parents, but we are also giving them a list of additional steps that will be taken to support them by the staff that have been supporting them in the hubs and our team. During that week, we are also looking at putting in place, you know, contacting families and making sure that when we come back the second week, we're in good shape. So extra precautions will be put in place before returning. Schools that have not yet opened under the order cannot open until we are in the red tier for fourteen days. And the direction is that districts need to send in their reopening plans in anticipation of reopening, predicated obviously on the health order. Next. So, site-specific reopening plans will be completed this week. In fact, I can tell you, they are now complete. And as required, we are pretty much ready to turn ours into the county in the next day or two. I have to, I really want to thank every one of our administrators, our leadership team, for working extremely hard on getting these done. I also want to just give a special shout-out to Amy, Kaier, Dustin, and Nick, who really worked very hard on every details of these plans. I have read through them, I have checked them. We are looking really good. We're following the directives, we're following all the requirements, and our plans are ready to go to the county very soon. Reopening dates and phases were approved at the November 12th meeting with the first phase on February 1st, 2021. And I know other districts who have had January, knowing about the, just wondering and being cautious about what may happen during the winter break. Many of them are now moving closer to the date that we have in February. And in order for us to be open on February 1st, we do need to have, to be in the red tier fourteen days prior to that. So on January 13th, we'll have a much better idea of where we are as far as the tiers go. But since we do have our plans ready and our phases and dates and all of that in place, we are in excellent shape to, if at all, if, if we don't get to that point where we are in red, when we do have to be fourteen days before that, then that is something that we can kind of just move the dates a couple of weeks out. But again, we don't have a crystal ball, but I can tell you, if everyone follows these rules, that we hopefully will be in good shape. But again, January, we will know more. Reopening obviously depends on the health orders in January. We, as far as negotiations, we have been in negotiations with CVTA. We started in March. We've been meeting weekly for the last few months to complete. And we are not done with our memorandums of understanding for elementary or secondary, but we are working on that. Again, our reopening plans do not need to have that completed before we send them in, but once they're approved, we would be ready to basically allow to open COVID testing, and we'll continue to work with our bargaining units. COVID testing began. We've actually done that the last couple of weeks, and we, employees had their results sent to them through, those who were tested through text and emails, and district-designated personnel were in charge of the testing, and again, it went extremely well and very safely. Next. Increased legislative efforts to reopen school. I wanted to share this with you because I think that you are hearing it at the state level, you're hearing it at the federal level about the need to reopen schools. Obviously, with all Obviously, with all precautions put in place. And reopening schools is a top priority for legislators. And as you know, in, you know, when you listen to the, the federal information from the federal government as well. Tremendous learning loss has been noted. And increased social emotional needs. I can tell you that we are all very concerned about the learning loss, about what has happened so far. Although everyone is working really hard to make sure we meet the needs of the students as best as we can. It is obviously not the same as being in the classroom. Nothing can replace a teacher in the classroom and students being in the classroom together. And deepening disparities with groups of students is absolutely obvious and evident throughout the state. And this is a very huge concern for all of us. Prioritization efforts for vaccination. I just wanted to, I'm sure you have all heard that the first priority has, you've heard a lot about the first group, groups of folks who are going to get vaccination. But there is a huge push at the state to make sure that, that K-12 educators are top priority in the second phase. Now, when that will happen, we don't know. And again, with vaccination, the hope and the, the hope is that, you know, to have herd immunity, you would need about 75, 70 to 75%, I believe, of folks getting vaccination. When vaccinations become available for us, we obviously would have it available. We would be encouraging folks, but we cannot obviously force people to have to get the vaccine. More data on effectiveness of measures to minimize infection in school. I just wanted to share that because UCSF actually does great workshops for us. And at their last one, they talked about some new, new research or new, just new information that they continue to come upon. That really points in the direction of, you know, how children are less able to transmit and what happens with them, but also a lot of information about the, the first three bullets that we have talked about as well. Legislative advocacy, we also, each one of us, work really hard to make sure our voices are heard. And I had a great, a wonderful opportunity that last week to present to legislative staff, LEO, and other folks who were at the meeting, quite a few people. And I actually spoke and presented, we had 90 minutes, 90 minutes with them. Two other district leaders from down south, one from San Diego, one from, I'm sorry, one from Long Beach, actually, and one from up north. The three of us spoke. I shared our challenges, our successes and needs. And really talked about the fact that we're doing a lot of work to prepare for reopening as well. But it was wonderful to also share not some of our challenges, kind of tackling what's happened so far, but some of the things we have had in place in our school district with social emotional needs of, to know, to meet the needs of our students in a variety of ways. But it's again, a really good opportunity every time we each get in, you know, are able to speak to what our needs are, whether it be funding, whether it be just legislation that we need to have in place to make sure that we're moving forward. So that's our efforts and we'll continue to do that. Next slide. So, um, now I wanted to kind of move over to this part. Actually, let me ask if the board has any questions about what I covered so far.
Superintendent Amali, thank you for your update. Just wondering if you could just paint a picture for us very quickly. What are the elements of a reopening plan for a school site? So we just kind of understand a little bit better about what we're addressing in terms of safety.
Yeah. So our reopening plan, in fact, so our reopening plan includes everything that we need to have. And it's been on the website for a while. We also have a checklist that we have to turn in with the reopening plan. As I said, I'm not sure that every district actually has all of their site-specific plans. So I have to tell you, these site-specific plans that will be after they approve them, we will post them on the website at each school site. They include details of just about everything you can imagine. For example, um, you know, facilities and operations. I'm just going to talk in generalities, but they will be, they're available. Student checkout, check-in, you know, recess, lunch, nutrition services, lunch procedures, but also triage, what happens if someone has a case, tracing, tracking. All of those details are in the plan and what we have to turn into the, to the county. So there's a checklist that includes the things I mentioned, cleaning, disinfection, physical distancing, face covering, PPE, all of those things. So they will be all posted on each school's website as well. And then there will also be a lot of training. So the month of January is going to be time for us to actually train our students, train our staff, making sure that we have everything in place. Our principals are working really, really hard. Putting together videos. We have a set of actually resources for families. Because we want to have time, we want to be fully prepared. Any other questions? Before I go to the fun part. All right. So, um, next slide. So Amy, Ms. Kaier has done an amazing job really working on this because we know that in the past, we would be in the boardroom. And we had school presentations, which we really miss in person. And we know that we want to be back in person. So that's a part of also our reopening. And so as we come back into having our meetings in person, we know that we've had our virtual meetings since April. And this, having them on Zoom and the way we are doing it right now, increased engagement in the past few months with, because of technology. And, and we're very pleased about that. In-person meetings starting in January, hopefully at some point. Obviously, again, predicated on health orders and needed technology. And we want to share with you some information on what might be some options. So again, when we do that, we have to follow strict guidelines and restrictions on number of people present. Which means when we are in session, we wouldn't be able to have a normal board meeting where people can come in. So in that sense, there are options to, that we're going to go over, options to stream board meetings. So there's Zoom, YouTube, and Face, Facebook Live. I'm going to, as I present, I'm going to ask actually Amy to jump in and take it from here. And then we'll go back and forth.
Sounds good. I also have Gray Coe, the director of technology, available as well. So if we have some questions, he's around. So the first thing I wanted just to kind of go over the options to streaming. So currently, we use Zoom. This is probably one of the best features because it allows the community to be a part of the board meetings from their house. And it's a great way for us to actually manage participation with public comments. When you go into something like YouTube, you still need an outlet for the community to, you know, have their public comment. YouTube does have that feature, but it's a little bit harder to manage, I'll say on my part. Um, because I'm also doing the Zoom part as well. So currently, when we have streamed on YouTube as well, I've actually turned comments off. But all of our board meetings are now on YouTube, our YouTube channel. So that anybody can watch any of the previously recorded. It takes a couple of days to upload, but they are there. Facebook Live, I know a lot of people like Facebook Live. It's, it's not, it's going to be hard to manage if that's something that the board is interested to do. Because there's no way to stop comments. And unfortunately, if you've ever been on a Facebook Live event, people are not always the nicest on Facebook. It doesn't matter where you're at. And so that, I don't think is a really good avenue for us as a district. So I'm kind of thinking more staying with Zoom. And if we need to do YouTube, we can do that as well.
So next slide.
Do you want me to go ahead and go?
Yeah.
Okay. So prior to the shutdown in March, Mr. Coe and I were actually looking at upgrading the boardroom. Our boardroom technology is very, very old, outdated. So we were actually looking to put in brand new microphones, add a couple more monitors, actually the TV monitors on different sides of the room so that it's a lot easier to see. And in turn, upgrading all the equipment. We have a lot of equipment in there that we no longer use. We don't use DVD players. So take out the old equipment, put in some new equipment. And this is the quote that we have already received. I have you guys over the top of it. I think it's $40,000, $41,000. Since then, from a couple of board meetings ago, we were asked to figure out the cost for installation for cameras to continue streaming as an option. So currently, since everybody is at their home, we all have our own laptops in front of us and using our computer cameras. Unfortunately, that's not ideal in the boardroom situation. So we would need some sort of cameras that would project not only you at the dais, but also the speakers as well. So that would be the cost for two cameras. And I do have some diagrams, a couple of slides down, to get both angles of the, of the room.
Yeah. So, so before we go to the next slide, I do want to say, sometimes when we share these things, people are like, oh, have you checked this out? Have you checked that equipment out? I can tell you, they've been working on this for a long time. And we want to make sure that whatever we put in there is very efficient, but very reliable. And some of you who have seen other school districts streaming, this is the kind of equipment, these are the kinds of equipments that they have.
And a couple of options before I show the, the diagrams that I put together is I wanted to just kind of just show that, oh boy, sorry, I went too fast. And the differences between having the cameras versus not having the cameras, especially in our COVID situation. So right now with the camera equipment, if we were to install it, we'd be able to pan, zoom, do a room, look out, be able to also, as I, as I'm speaking, zoom in on me for the, I'll say the world to see. It also is a lot easier. So there will be actually like a remote control that I would be able to use during the board meeting and with presets. So for instance, if trustee Whitaker was speaking, I press number one, the camera automatically zooms to her. So that it makes it super user-friendly. The other thing is we wouldn't necessarily need to have our own laptops in front of us because if we don't have this, that is what we would have to do in order to accomplish this virtual environment for the public to be a part of. And so without the cameras, again, we would need our computers. Or we would have to do, we have one, we have a TV that has one camera, but it would be everybody in the entire room. And I don't think the, you know, the, excuse me, the microphones aren't great in there to begin with. So it might be very hard for the public and the community to actually hear what the board is saying.
So our best option is having the, having the camera, the camera system so that we can, then we are not in the room, but we're really actually on our computers. Instead, we are actually in the room and able to stream with the camera efficiently.
Yes. So our first diagram that I put together is actually COVID in-person board meetings. So currently, if we were to begin having in-person board meetings, all these little Xs here are the chair locations, six feet apart. And again, if we were to have it without the camera system, everybody would be sitting in this location with their own camera and laptop in front of them. So you wouldn't really be talking to somebody across the room. You would still consider be talking to somebody via your, your own laptop. Whereas if we add these two cameras, the yellow one here and the blue one here, we would be able to actually project all of the people at the dais. And then the cabinet members that would probably be sitting over here at these tables. The only two that may be a little bit limited in their projection would be the people sitting on this side. But that would be something that we might be able to play with. But as of right now, this is what it would look like. And then the next slide would actually be when COVID goes away, hopefully someday, and we're able to have board meetings with no restrictions. This is how the layout would be. So the blue camera would obviously project everybody sitting at the dais. And the yellow camera would be able to get everybody at the podium and potentially some of the, the members in the audience as well. And I think that was it.
Yeah. So, any questions? Again, this is not, we just kind of, if, if I can get some directions so that we can kind of move in that in whichever way we are going, because it will take a little bit of time to get this. But this way, you do have, the public would have access to our board meetings way better than we'll ever have.
Comment, but Doc raises your hand first. So go ahead, Doc.
Thank you, Amy. That was a great presentation and a great diagram, very easy, understandable. And thank you for all of the research that you did to, to put that together. That was a lot. I think this is great for our community. You know, for a long time, we've been talking sort of casually about moving in this direction. And so many boards have done this. So I think if we can make this happen, you know, and someday COVID will be gone, it would be great to continue to have this level of participation from the community.
I have similar thoughts. As Doc, I, you know, we've been talking about this as a board and as a community for a little while now. How can we do this? How can we continue to reach out and we now are doing it. And as we go back, making it that much easier would be great. And Amy, thank you for all your hard work. We really appreciate you keep us together and hold us together at these meetings. So we're really looking forward to something that makes it easier for you as well.
Mike?
Yeah, I just want to thank you all for coming to the board tonight with this. In a community like Casa Rowley, where I think there is a democracy deficit, putting our board out there and putting this school district out in the public for everyone to see us is very important and the right thing to do. And I hope after we get to the other side of this pandemic, we continue having the public, we've seen because we've been online. So I just want to thank, thank you for the thoughtful research on this and look forward to coming to some decisions around it.
Mike, Dolly?
Oh, hi. Yes, I just wanted to say, I think it's really great having the transparency. And the board has already been able to see during this times of the pandemic, what it would look like anyway to be on Zoom and be able to have plenty of people from home being able to make all of those public comments and have the cameras on there. So I think that's really great that we're going to continue to do that and get the technology in there to make it happen. Great. Good job. Yeah.
Well, I agree with everybody. You know, in one of our meetings back in August, we had 885 people on a Zoom call, which is pretty astounding. So I'm glad to see that we're in the get some better equipment and be able to do it in a more efficient way. So I'm all for it too. Thanks.
Sounds like you have your consensus and direction.
Yeah. And then it'll take a while. And I love that picture, Amy. Can you put that up where everybody's going to be here and COVID's gone? I'm going to keep that on my desk as a wish. So anyway, but thank you so much. But I honestly, if I had a camera on Amy while we have our board meetings, you would see. Sometimes you see me look the other way because she's sitting Sometimes you see me look the other way because she's sitting across from me in her office. But it has been such a valiant effort on her part to make sure everything is set up. And, you know, just handling so many things so well that it doesn't look like it's hard, but I can tell you that it's a lot of work on Amy's part. So thank you, Amy.
I, you know, I want to second that for me because Amy has kept me sane. You know, as board president, running new, running technology during a board meeting and calling on people and getting stuff in the background, like she's keeping me sane so I can actually leave the meeting. So, you know, it's a lot harder than it looks. She makes it seamless. So I really appreciate it, Amy.
So that's our update.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
We will move on to item eight B, approval of the amended personnel report.
I'll move approval of the amended personnel report.
A second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. We'll move on to public hearing accounting of development fees for 2019, 2020 fiscal year.
Yeah, Ms. Chan?
Thank you. Good evening. This is a reporting requirement to ensure transparency and compliance with the collection of developer fees. The report must be available to the public within 180 days of the close of the fiscal year. And so on our cover page, we noted that this was available to, made available to the public on November 22nd. And it's about 15 days, it's actually more than 15 days. And so we wanted to make sure that the public was aware that we were bringing this to you for approval and public hearing, public hearing and then approval.
Seeing that we have no hands raised for the public hearing, I will close the public hearing. And I will move on to item eight D, adopt resolution fourteen twenty twenty-one regarding accounting of development fees for 2019, 2020 fiscal year.
Thank you. It's, the section is included, the attachment. The fees collected, identification of improvement, as we've noted, a couple of items there. One, the big amount is actually the wellness center at the high school, which is really just a portion of the the actual costs was funded by the developer fees. The ending balance is what we've noticed is about a hundred eighty thousand dollars. And that is actually, all of these funds are recorded in a separate fund. It's the developer fee fund, it's Fund 25. And it's actually Capital Facilities Fund is, that's what the the actual, the the name of the fund. But it's Fund 25, it's a separate account. So we account for everything that we've collected, including all the uses as well as ending balance.
Thank you, Susie. And this is an action item.
So I'll move to adopt resolution forty-four.
A second.
It's been moved and seconded. Shane, your preferential vote?
Yes.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. We will move on to item eight E, approve the 2021 local control funding formula, LCFF budget overview overview for parents.
Thank you. The CDE released this updated template. This is actually similar, almost similar to what you've seen in the past about a year ago when we sent or presented, Dr. Ryman presented the LCAP. Included into LCAP is really the budget overview for parents. And this one, because of COVID, they did it in separate, so it's 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 a it's a piecemeal they they did. We had the continue, the learning continuity and attendance plan that was approved was presented to you in September, it was approved. And then this this time, it's really the the budget overview for parents and it's required. And this must be adopted and in conjunction, in conjunction with the first interim. And that's, this is what we're bringing forward to you. It's due tomorrow to the county as well as the the first interim report. So in the budget overview for parents, we show all of the expenditures that are specifically budgeted expenditures for high need students in the continuity learning plan that you've approved. So we have a a chart of the expenditures, the planned expenditures this year, as well as we've also included the information for prior year.
This is an action item.
I'll move approval of the 2021 local control funding formula overview.
Mike, are you seconding?
Sure, I'm seconding.
I saw you raise your hand, but I didn't hear you. All right, it's been moved and seconded. Shane, your preferential vote?
Yes.
Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. We will move on to item eight F, certification of financial condition first interim report 2020, 2021. Over to you, Susie.
Thank you. Okay, so here we are, December fourteenth, and so we're presenting, this is the first interim report. So next slide. So just to give you an overview, I know we have a couple of new trustees here. So education code section four two one three zero requires that school districts certify to the state the fiscal stability of the district. So we must demonstrate that we meet, you know, our fiscal obligations for the current, not just for the current year, but it's also for the two out years. And so we report after, or at least present, no later than forty-five days after the close of the report, reporting period. So for first interim, this is what we're bringing to you tonight. Our first interim covers all actual expenditures and actual revenues from July first through October thirty-first, as well as we've updated our projections for the balance of the year, and this is through June thirtieth. I'm not going to cover second interim, that's going to be in in March, but I just wanted to share with you that first interim really covers all of our actuals, actual expenditures and revenues. And also, we've updated the projections based on the best information that we currently have. Next slide. So there are three budget certifications. And so the first one here is positive certification, and this is what we're bringing to you, our first interim, based on our financial, our financial obligations in the current year and two subsequent years. We are, we are going to meet our three percent reserve for some districts who may not be able to meet their three percent reserve in the current year and two out years. Some of them, you probably heard, they certify themselves as qualified. And of course, if they are not able to meet at all their three percent reserve in the current year or two out years, they certify themselves as a negative. But for us, we've always been in a positive certification, and that's what we are. We're going to go through that and 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 share with you what our reserves look what looks like. Next slide. So this is the annual budget cycle. You, the board approved the or adopted the 2020, 21 budget back in June. I know this is prior to the state budget being enacted, so we always, our requirement is to have an adopted budget by July first of the, for the, for the new year. So our budget was adopted again in in June. We've had a revised budget, and so that was the, what we call forty-five day revise. And this is after, we have about forty-five days after the state, after the governor enacts the budget. So any changes we are required to to report. First interim, that is, this is the report that we're bringing to you. Again, it's looking at actuals. And so again, this is, this is an update on where we are best, based on the best information that we have. Okay, and next slide. This time, we're going to go through, just highlight some of the changes. We've had quite a few changes since forty-five day revised in August. And that's because a lot of the money that we've received that's included in the in the state enacted budget are the CARES Act funding. At that time, we couldn't really put, in August, we've heard that there is money coming in, but we were not sure of how much. And so though we did not, we could not report to you exactly how much we would put in our budget until we knew for sure the exact amount that we would get. So, so in terms of revenue, I'll actually start at LCFF, I've actually went way ahead, which is CARES Act, but let me start with LCFF. Again, this is looking at forty-five day revise that you approved in August. And this is now changes from forty-five days revise to first interim. So there's a decrease in two hundred seventy, almost two hundred seventy-seven thousand dollars. And this is because of the decrease in unduplicated pupil count. So as of this, when we pulled our information, our unduplicated count went down close to five hundred kids. We were always at twenty, about twenty-eight, twenty-nine percent. But we, as of the the report that we pulled a few weeks ago, we were actually way down. So I know that the, this is not just a a, this is not just Castor Valley, this is, you know, surrounding districts as well that are very concerned about the unduplicated count, and that is because of our free and reduce count is down. Some of our families are just not, are not, we actually did not receive applications, we, or they, we don't have a lot of applications turned in for free and reduce. And so what we've been doing is really reaching out to families if they can submit the free and reduce application to us. This will impact, this really is impacting our our funding. So this is not just the Fund thirteen, which is our cafeteria fund. It 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 has an impact on our LCFF. So this decrease is pending, so we don't, we have additional information with all the work that's being done and the education and educational services, as well as technology and child nutrition department. They really are reaching out to families and identifying families that are in need. They are EL, as you know, are, unduplicated count is based on our English learner students, free and reduced, which is our socioeconomic socioeconomically disadvantaged students, as well as foster youth and migrant students. So this reduction is about two hundred seventy-six thousand dollars for us. But, and the state is, has actually extended the deadline. And so we have a little bit of time to still make those phone calls and possibly change this number to a more positive a number. On the federal side.
I know one has a question, so let's get to her. Okay.
Hi, Susie, sorry to interrupt. I, so do we know, excuse me, who the families are that we need to reach out to, to to complete the applications? That's one. And do you think any of this might be people leaving our district because they simply can't afford to be here anymore, influencing the numbers?
It's a, it's a, thank you for the questions. Great questions. Combination of both, I know that we are, we, we, actually, in the next few slides, I will show the difference in in enrollment and in terms of revenue. We do know of our families that are in need. I know we work closely with our social workers, Ed Services Department. We have, we do a comparison of prior years data. So we have that that information in our child nutrition department where they do a comparison of the number of students or students that we had received application and they were approved prior years. And so we do contact them and get that information. What we, with the COVID nineteen, there was a waiver from the U.S. Department of Agriculture to for this, allowing the, all districts to, school districts in California, or actually US, I should say, to provide free meals to all children eighteen and below. And so we know that that is, that has an impact on school districts because meals are already free. And so what is the benefit, you know, what's the really the use? And I know that we've had those conversations with with families, you know, it's free anyway, so why, why, why fill out the form? I do want to know that there is an impact because our funding is also based on the unduplicated count.
And Susie, we do have a comment question from Gary.
You know, I just, I think I, I'm not sure I heard something correctly. So I think you said how many students we were down from our total student count. Did I hear that correctly? Having, what was that number?
It's the unduplicated count. It's, so at the time that we pulled the data to prepare the first interim, we were at close to twenty-one hundred unduplicated pupil count. Last year, we did a comparison, we were at twenty-six hundred.
So the kids are still in our system. We haven't lost them.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. That was.
Yeah, that's a really good question because for those who don't know why this unduplicated is important, it's because this is, remember how we have the base funding, then on top of it, we have supplemental. Our supplemental funds are based on the percentage of students in those categories this Chan just mentioned. So when they don't, when we don't have them in those categories, when they, we don't have all of the paperwork that people need to fill out to qualify, then that number goes down.
Mike, you had a comment question?
Um, one question, clarification and comment. Just, just for my justification and for the public's justification, I think sometimes when you see term unduplicated pupil count, maybe our audience members are not too sure what that is. Can you just define that again for us very clearly? And then I'm wondering what our strategies have been in light of current economic situations, the fact that we aren't physically in schools. There are probably families that are in need that weren't in need last year. And so what are our strategies there? Are we providing those forms at lunch pickup every day? I'd be curious about that. Thank you.
Thank you. So earlier I mentioned the, the, as of the time when we prepared this report, we did pull up the data and we were down at twenty-one hundred. Because of the work that Ed Services, our school, our social workers, our counselors, as well as our child nutrition staff, all the work that they've been doing the last few, really few weeks to identify our students, we were actually up. So, so I just wanted to share that with you. Again, that's why I put at the bottom there, unduplicated pupil count will be certified by December eighteenth because we had that window period to really identify the students that we need to identify. So, so we are, so this two hundred seventy-seven thousand dollars, what we want, wanted to do is really get our data out to the state and certify. And once it's certified, then we will update the number here. It looks to be a slight decrease compared to this, you know, the four, the five hundred students that, as of the 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 time when we put this together. So we mean, we are for sure not going to see a two hundred seventy-seven thousand reduction. It will be less than that. So just wanted to share that with you. The additional work that we we do or 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 information
additional work that we we do or 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 information that we send out. I know our Director of Child Nutrition is always thinking of many ways to reach out. I know she's working with the principals as well as, you know, providing additional information. One of the things that we have looked into is really just sharing or handing out applications. Not daily, obviously, but maybe, you know, on the kind of a weekly basis to to families.
Yeah, so I, I, I want to chime in and say I, first of all, I want to thanks, I want to thanks, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead. I want to let Michael know to just go ahead and talk. I want, yeah, so I wanted to describe what Mr. Kuziak was asking about. So the reason we call it unduplicated is because the categories of students we said in each district, what they want to make sure is you're not counting every student more than once. So for example, if I am an English learner and I am, let's say, a foster youth, I can only be counted as one. So if I, so that's why they call it unduplicated. It's just a term they're using to say you can be in any of these categories or all of them, but you're only counting that child as one. I hope that explains.
Thank you, Miss Amadi, I totally forgot about that other question, thank you.
And thank you for sharing that, I think that's important. And as someone who benefited from free and reduced lunches, I think it's really important that we stigmatize and do all we can to qualify as many of our, of our families out there, and thank you for those efforts.
Yeah, and I, I think something that we really want to help families know is that it's not just about the free and or reduced meal, but a lot of other services can actually be provided to students, like Ms. Chan just mentioned, you know, Ed Services works really hard. The social worker is making sure we reach out to families. So that's why it's, it's not just necessarily just about the money, but it's like, what kind of things can we do to support you? Suzie, you can go ahead.
Okay, thank you. So moving on to the federal revenue. It's so what I mentioned earlier about the CARES Act funding. Again, as of the forty five day revise, we knew that we were going to get CARES Act funding. So this is the coronavirus stimulus plan. So, but at that time, again, we did not know exactly the amount, so we couldn't really put it in the budget. So, so that's why you're seeing it as a first interim, so that three point nine million dollars there under the federal revenue is one time CARES Act funding. And then under the state, we do have a portion of the CARES Act is coming from this state. It's the, what they call, you know, the unrestricted general fund. And so half of that, one point four million dollars is from the CARES Act. And then the other half is the Stirs on behalf. We do need, we do make adjustments to our Calsters on behalf report. This is paper only, so for, for two of our new brand, brand new board members, you may have heard of the Calsters payment on behalf, and that is really just a paper only recording. We we record the revenue and we record the expenses, but there's no actual cash that we get from the state. They, the state just requires us to, to record the portion of what they're paying. And so that's what's included in our budget on her, on our behalf. Local is a small adjustment there of interest earnings. As you know, we're actually going through in the current year, included in the state budget is the deferrals. And so we've adjusted down our interest earnings because we know that we're not actually going to, or at least the plan is for us not to get the 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 funding or cash, I should say, cash from the state. And so we are adjusting that downwards. And a slight increase or decrease in facility rental. As you all know, because of COVID, we've had to close our facilities to the public. And so this is a rental facility for our CFA, our Center for the Arts.
Suzie, before I go forward, I just want to let the public know that I see that there is a public comment waiting for us, but we're going to finish the slide deck first before we allow public comment on this item and before we vote, we'll allow public comment. So just FYI, if you see.
Okay, and then we'll move on to the next slide. Okay, so we've looked at revenue, now we're looking, we will be looking at expenditures. So again, this is looking at forty five compare, a comparison of from forty five day revised to first interim. So salaries and benefits. You are seeing, you're seeing an increase there of eight hundred ninety thousand dollars. And that's again, is mostly due to one time CARES Act and the ESR funding. I have a slide of the, these expenditures in the next few slides, and so I will go over those in detail in in a few minutes. Books and supplies. Again, we're looking, we're, we're CARES Act. The total that we receive from the state is, from the federal government is four point three million dollars. And so a lot of this really from salaries and benefits to books and supplies and services and other expenses really makes up most of the the CARES Act. And and some of the adjustments are lottery carryover in our restricted lottery. Capital outlay. This is a huge increase that you're seeing from forty five days revised to first interim of three point two million dollars. And that's because we did have some carryover in between restricted maintenance and deferred maintenance that we plan to use in the current year. So again, those are carryover amounts in the current, from prior year to to current year. Okay, next slide. So, so we've looked at revenue, looked at expenditures. Now let's take a look at our components of twenty twenty one ending fund balance. So our ending fund balance as a first interim is nine point nine million dollars. And we've had, we have these set aside that are required. And so this is our, the first one there is revolving cash. We also have stores legally restricted. So what are those? A one point one million dollars are legally restricted that are not in the budget. So meaning they have, so we have a little bit of carry of, well, we have carryover about of one point one million dollars from grants that we really don't have any plans to use in the current year, small grants here and there until next year. We are also are very careful when it comes to spending restricted funds from, let's say, our donations, from our parent donations because those funds are for specific purpose. And so once our, our school sites, our principals have a plan in place, they would submit that to the accounting department. And those plans then based on those plans, the money will come from the restricted, legally restricted funds, which is the one point one million dollars. So again, you'll see in the reports that are attached in the packet, that one point one million is from from mostly from from donations and and grants. Assigned here as part of our ending fund balance, what we've assigned is a hundred thirty one thousand dollars for our textbook adoption. You're used, you're probably used to seeing a bigger amount here. But the, the part of the reduction that we made in the current, in the current year, twenty twenty one is to reduce that by eight hundred thousand dollars. So what's left over for textbook adoption is a hundred, almost a hundred thirty two thousand dollars. We still have as a an ending balance for our CFA, our Center for the Arts of sixty eight thousand dollars that's set aside once we reopen and to 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 the public. So after subtracting all of those set asides and legally restricted balance, we're at eight point, close to eight point five million. And that is about seven point five five percent in the current year in reserves. So when you compare this eight point five million dollars to the forty five day revised back in August, is an actual increase of point seven million. So about seven hundred thousand dollars. So again, whenever we look at, when we review our budget, we always look at what are those one time savings that we can now change or update our budget? So it shows all of, you know, these one time on a regular basis rather than wait until the end of the, at the end of the fiscal year. So the first, this is, what you're seeing is again, a seven hundred thousand dollars due to one time savings in hourly substitute and field positions, as well as supplies and materials. Okay, no questions, I'll go to the next slide. Okay, so because it's, all the deferrals is such a hot topic. So we, we wanted to really just add a slide just to show you our cash flow. And our cash flow is as of November twenty twenty, which is, which was last month. So take a look at each month and the cash balance and then inter fund borrowing, if any, and then what is our adjusted cash balance? So this is still in line with the presentation that we made back in October with, in terms of our cash flow. So our July through October, we, or actually through November, our actual cash per month. And if you see, you know, we started off with close to fourteen point nine million dollars in cash. And then in November, we're actually down a little bit by nine point seven million dollars. So it it fluctuates because it depends on the, when we actually get revenue, when we get the revenue either from the state, from the local, from the federal or, you know, local, including donations or grants that we apply for. But if you, and then we project for, from December all the way through June, where we are going to be, right? So what our cash looks like. So I highlighted it for you there. In May, we're going to end up with a four point seven billion negative cash. And so again, this is aligned with what we presented to you back in October. The cash we knew that May was going to be a you know, a, a, a time where we really need to take a look at other funds to borrow from. And so in May, we are looking at a six point five million dollars, and this will come from other funds. And so other, our other funds, we, we have already identified a couple, a couple of other funds where we can get this six point five million dollars that really doesn't cost us any money rather than going out and applying for a TRAN, which is the revenue anticipation note. We know that this year, this fiscal year, we will be able to borrow from ourselves and save some money rather than, again, rather than go out. So we're, we are anticipating a six point five million dollar adjustment, not adjustment, but inter fund borrowing and a resolution for public hearing will be submitted to you for approval in some time in March, so we can have all of that prepared and sent over to the county before we, we make that transfer. And again, when we, when I say borrow, we will have plans for the following fiscal year to actually repay the other funds. The six point five million dollars, not just the full six point five million dollars, any interest that that fund should have, should have earned during that time when general fund borrowed that money, we would pay that back principal, with principal and interest. And again, for the public and also for a couple of board members, new board members, the reason why we're, we have a negative cash balance is because as part of the state enacted budget, the governor, instead of cutting the LCFF by ten percent, he applied or imposed a deferral. So deferral starts from February, every single month, all the way through June. So February, March, April, May, June. A portion of our apportionment from the state, we won't get. And then a hundred percent in June, meaning zero, will get, we won't get anything from this date until the next fiscal year.
Thank you so much for explaining that. I, I think it's important the public appreciates why that, where that's coming from. If there's any changes in the strategy for the state of California, this could very well change, correct?
Yes, that's correct. What we are hearing is that the state is actually received a lot more money than they projected. And so, which is a really good, we think, you know, we, we are hearing that the first thing that the the legislator will do is ask for a, to buy down, I should say, to ask to buy down the deferrals or completely eliminate them. So we are, they are looking at a twenty six billion windfall, if that's what we've heard as of a couple of weeks ago. So we're really hoping that that, the deferrals gets eliminated. And so there's no need for us to borrow the six point five from other funds and and will be good for the rest of the fiscal year.
So one of, one of the things I want to just chime in and say is this is why our active participation in anything we can do, which is, you know, to have the opportunity to talk to the legislators and their staff to make sure that they understand the you know, the importance of why we should have the kind of funding we should have. One of the things we have been asking them at our last meeting was holding us harmless around that unduplicated piece, right? Because when those, when they, like, for example, and, you know, our enrollment, you'll get some information on that in a, in a bit. But the other piece is to say to them, this is great, there's more money. As Ms. Chan said, it's wonderful that you're going to eliminate the deferrals, but basically, it's not giving us any extra money. So in addition to that, what else are we going to get? In addition, to move us to where we should have our funding, right? And I think that's, that's really the piece we need to continue to push for. And I've also, we've also heard that the next piece that they hopefully will address is perhaps some reprieve around Stirs and Purse, but we don't know yet. So just again, kind of saying, speak up, tell legislators that deferrals were not good, getting rid of them is good, but it's not giving us any extra money. We're just not having to use, you know, additional money to pay for the interest. But we thank you for not having deferrals.
Okay, we'll move on to the next slide. Okay, so I mentioned earlier about the, our current year and also our two out years. So this is our multi-year projection. So we're required as part of the reporting, you know, reporting requirement is to include our multi-year projections, that's showing our current year as well as the two out years. So, but in this multi-year projection, I've also included nineteen twenty, just to remind us of how much we received last year and all the, you know, the expenditures and our reserve at the end of the year that carried forward in the current year. So in terms of the twenty, in looking at twenty twenty one budget, I just wanted to just really focus on LCFF as well as, you know, the federal, federal and state. So first, let's look at the LCFF and see the eighty two point three million dollars in twenty twenty one. It goes down slightly in twenty one, twenty two, and that's because of the unduplicated pupil count that we've talked about. Again, we expect that to change, but until we get the, the number certified, we just won't be able to do that until, and we're expecting that in second interim. But this is as of the, again, the, the data that we pulled when we prepared the first interim report. And so you're looking at about four hundred thousand dollar change from this year to next year in terms of LCFF. And then take a look at a And then take a look at 2122, the projection of $81.9 million. And then it goes down to 80.6 million. That is a 1.3 million reduction. And that's because of the enrollment. So our own enrollment is down from prior year to this year. Because we're held harmless, and that's part of the state budget in the current year, we are actually going to benefit from that held harmless ADA in the current year and next fiscal year. But it will impact us because of our declining enrollment in 2120, in 2223. And that's why you're seeing a $1.3 million reduction there. Unless the state decides to continue to freeze the ADA for another year. If that's not, if we don't get that, then we are definitely going to see that $1.3 million reduction in 2223. So that's why I wanted to just really focus the, or, or, or share that with you in terms of our LCFF funding. All the, this year, including the two out years, we did not assume COLA because that's not in the budget as far as what the, the proposal is. So again, this year is a zero COLA as well as the two out years. The federal, you're seeing a change there from 2122 to 20, from 2021 to 2122. That's because of the elimination of the One Time CARES Act. So it goes back down to $2.5 million because of the eliminate, again, elimination of the CARES Act in the federal and state. So looking at all of this, including the expenditures, salaries and benefits will be included here. It's just, you know, there are step and column costs each year as well as changes to the callsters and callpers contribution, the district contribution. Callsters is for our, our teacher, our certificated staff. And callpers is for our classified staff. Books and supplies and outlay as well as services and operating expenditures in 2122 compared to 21, in 2021 compared to 2122. Again, are those, we've eliminated all those one-time funds that we budgeted in the current year. So really looking at all the way at the bottom of this multi-year projection, you're seeing the reserve for economic uncertainties. As I mentioned to you in the previous slide, we, we are as a first interim in the current year at $8.5 million. That accounts for about 7.55%. Our 2122, it goes down to 6.83%. And take a look at that third year, we will be at 3.54% again, because of our increased costs, but are, as well as a reduction in the LCFF revenue. So this is, so based on this, we are asking the board to approve the budget as positive. You know, we, we are meeting the 3% reserve in current year and two out years. And so, so we are certifying ourselves as positive.
Gary, you have a comment question?
Yeah, you know, there are a couple of things I'd like to say here. And I've said these, several of these before, but I'd like to repeat them for the benefit of our two new members. First of all, I mean, this is a good report. The budget is in such flux, I'm surprised that you can actually create a budget. I mean, there are so many uncertainties right now in the state funding with, are we going to have deferrals or not? You know, at some point, the STIRS and PERS picks back up again. We have costs for summer school that we can't really anticipate quite yet. I don't believe, and I don't think those are included in here. So there's a lot of a lot of uncertainty. But one thing that is certain, if you look at this, is that we have been deficit spending for years. So it's really critical to look at that ending balance and the reserve and so forth and see that it diminishes each year. And the term carryover is often used. We really don't have any carryover in our budget. It's really just what's left of an ever diminishing reserve. And at some point, and you can see our burn here, it's distorted a little bit because of the one-time CARES Act money that we got. We've been burning $2 to $3 million more a year than we've been receiving. And somewhere out there, there's a reckoning on this. It's really hard, it's going to get really hard to figure out where that is right now because of all the flux in the budget. But you know, at the end here, we're not really left with very much considering that we're burning a couple of million bucks a year more than we take in. And at some point, we're really are going to have to face that. Not sure when that is, but it's not that far away. When if we don't face it, we're going to be facing it regardless, we'll hit the wall. So it's just a comment that I've said a couple of times before, but, you know, Mike and Dalia, I hope you look at that really carefully and think about it. Thanks very much.
Yeah, I, I just need to say a couple of things before we end the presentation. I, to Trustee Howard's point, this is why it's so critical to not just be content with, okay, we need 3% reserve third year out, we're good. Right? This is why it's important to think about the fact that this is, that we need to increase our reserves to make sure that when, that we, and, and to not deficit spend in order to do that. And I also wanted to see if Ms. Chan, if you want to, if you could say a couple of more words, we've talked about, about the declining enrollment. And, and we actually looked at numbers, and I know we've shared them with you as well, that some of this happened at the beginning of the year until now. Because we've lost students, about 120 students, right?
Yes, yes. So if we compare our enrollment from prior year to current year, actually, really, the beginning of the, when we started the school year in August. So we've lost about 121 students. And so we do have, you know, when, when students leave, they give us a reason for, you know, leaving. And so we, you know, we know that about 30% of the students that left moved to, you know, other public schools such as charter school, districts that are nearby or, and also like in the greater Bay area. 20, 20% moved outside of California, 29% to private schools. And then we also have a four, or actually really a 3% that moved out of the country. And then I believe I mentioned, already mentioned the 20% that moved out of California. And then we have 15, unfortunately, for the 12% or 15 students that left, did not provide us a reason for exit or where they were going. And so we, we don't have that. But most of the, the students that left, at least 90 or 88% of the students, we knew where they actually went. So again, that's about 121 students since the, we started the school year. And so that is, when I mentioned earlier in the 2223, that has an impact on our revenue. And so that is about the $1.2 million reduction.
Okay, so the vast majority of them going to, you know, probably charter schools, private schools. So the other thing I, I wanted to mention is that we are, this is the year we have to go out for, to sell the rest of our bonds. So Ms. Chan and I will be busy working on that. And it is really important that when we do go out for our geo-bonds to sell them, that we do have this kind of credit rating we've always had. So just to want to mention that, so we're aware of it. And I want to thank Suzie for being such an outstanding CBO. I can't tell you how proud I am of her work. And we're in good shape, we're in good hands. But let's continue to advocate at this stage. So now, if you have any questions before we go to comments from the public, any other questions?
We still have a few slides there.
I had one really fast comment, and actually Suzie said it right at the very end of her talk. And, and I will insert parenthetically to agree with Parveen. Suzie does an extraordinary job with this, so we're lucky to have you. But, you know, this is just for Mike and Dolly again. And Suzie said it, 100 students is a million dollars. So it's always a good rule of thumb to keep in mind. It's, that's a million too, that we lost. If we can't find those students again or whatever, so just keep that in mind. Thanks.
Yeah, I, I just wanted to express to Ms. Chan my gratitude, thoroughness and thoughtfulness of how you walked us through this. For my first board meeting, I, I, I feel much more confident with your, with your counsel, and I want to thank you for that. To the observation about, you know, hitting the wall, the revenue challenges that we're facing, I would be interested in hearing from you, Ms. Chan, if you're hearing from other folks in your, your position who are facing similar revenue challenges. And it can't, is it just Castro Valley Unified? Or is this something that we're seeing across the state?
We're definitely seeing this across the state. I know our surrounding districts, we always meet, we have, you know, standing meetings. And also we, we, anytime something comes up, we are always in touch with each other. The enrollment decline is not just the Castro Valley. It's actually a statewide issue. They do, did have a report, a demographic report done. And they're projecting for the next, you know, the next decade. It's actually a declining enrollment for California. Surrounding districts, I know that I've one that is, you know, we, we've checked and, and same thing. We're, we're facing these challenges in terms of enrollment. Ours is about 121. I know of, you know, the surrounding districts that I've talked to are faced with, you know, 300 to 600 kids that, that in, in, in just one fiscal year. So, or in this current year, I should say. So definitely, you know, this is a challenge for, for a lot of the CBOs in terms of reduction. That's actually something that I know that one district, their board recently voted to close a couple of schools. And this is just a school district that's a few miles away from us because of declining enrollment.
Thank you, Suzie. We have Dolly and then Gary.
Oh, I was actually, you just answered the question I wanted to know, which was, well, how is our declining enrollment in comparison to other districts around us declining enrollment? Because I would think at some point the state may have to readjust its ADA if everybody in California is, you know, going through declining enrollment. And so we hope, right? Yeah. Okay, thank you. That's all.
Yeah, the state will solve the problem at some point, but it's usually beyond, at a time that's, after we've suffered considerably. And I just want to make, once, once again, another point here, and that is, it's not only declining enrollment. We live a lot closer hand to mouth than many other districts do because we don't have as much of the supplementary LCFF money. And we don't have partial taxes like most districts do. So we are the, maybe the, or certainly one of the least funded districts per student in the county. We may be the least funded. And so for us, losing money is in some ways more serious than it is for other districts. They have cushions they can fall back on, we don't.
Yeah, I, so again, as a part of the presentation, I, I mean, Suzie and I keep jumping back and forth, but I have to say, that is, we have shared with everybody, just like you said, Mr. Howard, that we are the lowest funded district in the county. And for example, the district, one of the districts that Ms. Chan was talking about, they have huge parcel taxes and still are, are facing that. I also want to say, the reality check for us is this. Many other districts around us and throughout the state, there has been declining enrollment. We haven't had that before. This is very new to us, and it's from the beginning of the year to now. So I just wanted to kind of put that on the table.
Thank you, Suzie.
Okay, we'll move on to the next few slides. Okay, so I've already shared this with you. These are the key assumptions in terms of the revenue and expenditures. I've noted the decrease in enrollment. We have zero cost of living adjustment for all three years. And then we also removed one-time funds in our out years. Expenditures, I noted earlier about the callsters and callpers for all three years. We, in our, in our multi-year projection, but I wanted to just share with you the, those rates again for callsters. And then again, those callsters is for state teachers retirement system for our certificated staff from 16, you know, 16.15% in the current year. And then if you look at 2223, it goes up to 18.1. This was, and then callpers, the public employees retirement system is for our classified employees in the current year is 20.7%. And then if you look at 2223, it's 26.3%. I do want to highlight the rates in the current year and 2122. Those are actually a little bit, you know, lower than a year ago. And that's because the state reduced the, the rates and call, you know, for callpers, callsters and callpers due to, you know, the, the reduction in our, in our funding. And so again, that's only good for a couple of years. Take a look at where it goes up from, you know, after next year, 18.1 and then 26.3 for callpers. And then just a couple of highlights there. We do comply with the minimum proportionality percentage, which is for our unduplicated pupil count. Anytime we, we, there's a change in the revenue, we want, we need to, we make sure that we set aside those funding for the students that generated those revenue. And again, remove the one-time expenditures from CARES Act and the other restricted carryover from 1920. Next slide. So just to highlight for you expenditures from the CARES Act, which is the coronavirus relief and economic security, we did receive about $4.3 million. And these are the expenditures. So we brought this forward to the board for approval as part of the continuity plan. These are, we've set aside or, or spent support for support services, including, you know, the professional development for staff, additional staffing needs as well as targeted and specialist, specialized services. We, we set aside money for academic assessments, online management system. Tutoring is very important for us. And as well as the mental health services and the restorative justice. In terms of materials and supplies, you're seeing close to a million dollars there for devices and wireless connectivity for students that allows us to purchase additional devices as well as issue MiFi's for our, for our families. And then the bottom or the last note, there is the item, I should say, is personal protective equipment, including disinfectant, portable hand washing stations that we were able to secure to prepare for reopening as well as air purifiers with HEPA filters and every single classroom. And so that makes up the $4.3 million. So for, for people that are wondering, you, you know, where the money went or how are we spending it? This is how we spent the $4.3 million. That's included in the budget that we, we just went through. The next slide.
And Ms. Chan, we wanted to share that we had to spend the federal portion by what date?
The federal portion, yes, by December 30, 30th, not 31st. So December 30th, this year, 2020.
Yeah, and believe me, we begged to see if we can have more time, and they said, no.
Okay, and then so for other funds, I know that we don't have a slide here, but this is really just a summary of our other funds. The ending fund balance. but this is really just a summary of our other funds, 20, uh, um, the ending fund balance. So, um, I am happy to announce that all of our funds are ending in a, you know, uh, positive, uh, with ending fund, a positive ending fund balance. So, um, that first one there is Fund 10 is a pass-through, meaning we get the money for other districts. We just receive it and then pass it through. That's why there's no balance there. This is for our member districts for the SALPA program, which is the, uh, special ed, um, unit, uh, plan, uh, local unit plan. And then from Fund 11, um, all the way to, uh, Fund 67, um, that's highlighted for you or, or listed for you there. Um, this is about $21.8 million. I do want to note the Fund 35, the county school facilities is actually where we will borrow the $6.5 million um, that I mentioned, um, if the deferrals continue. So if the state, um, uh, you know, continues with the deferral, um, in the current year, we do have, um, some money or we have the $7.3 million when we can borrow from. In that fund. Okay, and then the next slide. So in terms of next steps, uh, just, uh, very quickly, um, this report is due to this, to the county tomorrow. We will submit the entire packet as well as the certification page. Um, the, the county will review it, um, and we'll have about, it will take about 45 days to review, um, and approve of the, uh, our budget. Um, then, uh, you can expect a report or not a report, but actually a letter, uh, a formal letter from, um, uh, the superintendent Karen Monroe, um, confirming the certification. So, so that takes about, uh, 45 days because they do go through a very tedious process, um, uh, of reviewing, uh, the budget, uh, each district's budget. Uh, and then of course, then I noted there, January 2021 is when we will hear about the, uh, governor's proposed budget for 21, 22. So we can't wait. Um, once we have that information, we will, uh, share that with you. Um, I believe it's scheduled for a second week, uh, the board meeting, uh, on the 27. And then of course, then we have the second interim in March. Uh, in May, we'll present the May revise, uh, any changes to the proposed budget. And then the 2020, on June 2021 will be the budget, uh, and LCAP public hearing and adoption for 21, 22. So now this is my final slide. And then if you have additional questions or comment.
Say none. Um, I have two public hands raised, so I want to give them a chance to speak. So the first person that I have a hand raise is Jada Wright. Jada, I'm going to bring you over to talk. Hi, Jada. You're on mute. Welcome. Please proceed.
Hello, um, I just wanted to know. When are we gonna go back to? Go and press in the bit up on mine.
So Jada, we don't usually respond to comments and this is not on the, um, we're discussing the budget, so we're not just really discussing return to school. Um, but Parveen, can you maybe make a comment back?
I couldn't, no, I couldn't hear, um, the comment or the question.
Jada was asking when we're going back to school.
Oh, um, so the, the phases of reopening is on our, the front page of our website, but elementary students, fourth and fifth grade, um, the, the date that we have at this point, uh, you know, depending on what happens in January, obviously, is February 1st for elementary. And then secondary is, uh, in March. But if you, um, if you have any other questions, just email me and we'll point you in the right direction.
Thank you, Jada. I'm going to, uh, lower your hand. Amy, could you help me on Jada? I'm having a hard time because I have to promote her to panelists, but I will bring in Bill Trolle.
Hello?
Welcome, Bill. Please proceed.
Hey, um, I'll, I'll just say, I, I was reading through the packet and I've been hearing the numbers floating around in the conversation around budget. Uh, I'm no public funding expert and I certainly don't understand how budgeting and the council for schools. But I will say generally this, I know from last couple of board meetings, we were talking about shortfalls and borrowing cash between accounts to make up for potential, potential funding issues in the coming school years. Uh, and then hearing some of the other numbers about expenditures that, that we're planning on and expenditures that I saw in the report from the packet this time. And, you know, I have to, I, I heard what Gary had to say on this subject and I completely agree because as somebody who manages a household and I'm sure other people who manage businesses, if we can't count on the money to be there, why on earth are we planning for huge expenditures? Uh, and maybe 60,000 doesn't compare to say a couple of million and some of these other amounts that you're expecting to come in, but we don't know if they're coming. So I have some real concerns about some of the things I'm hearing. And maybe there's stuff behind it that is not clear from the presentation that's offered here. And maybe we just don't understand the details. But I have to say, as a layperson, hearing these numbers float around and then hearing that we're going to be spending a couple hundred thousand dollars to borrow millions in cash between accounts in the coming year or two, um, I'm really concerned about that. Uh, and I, you know, we've been having some chatter among others behind the scenes. And, you know, some of us have said, you know, maybe we would agree for a parcel tax if we felt more confident about how this money was being managed and used, particularly when I think there was also a comment about a reduction in textbook spending and educational material spending, when in fact, the whole point of this endeavor is to educate. So I'm less concerned about what, for example, is going into our boardroom than I am about what's going into the classroom. And that's pretty much all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Bill. I'm going to meet you live. And I'm going to lower your hand. And I will bring in Julio.
Hello, this is Julio Royal. I wanted, you know, I had originally signed up for this budget agenda item because I, I wasn't sure the rationale of why we weren't expanding the learning hubs. I was wondering if it was a budget issue and that's why I signed up for this piece. And so really, I wanted to touch base on this piece. I understand the different hurdles and, um, the unknowns that are happening within the budget. But I think it's really, really, really important, um, in this time of need for students that we expand the learning hubs. And whether that's a budgetary issue, I really think it's important to focus and to make an investment there because as, due to the fact that we weren't able to get into school, um, before the purple tier started, as somebody who works in public education and Marin County for a public school district, um, in Saul and works every day with students returning to school, seeing them thrive in this, um, environment and seeing the, the data from Marin County that there are no school-based transmissions and most districts in Marin County have been back in school since September 5th. Um, and I really think it's important that we move resources to be able to expand the learning hubs because it's really important. Students, it doesn't seem clear how you get in the learning club, learning hubs. We've reached out. There's not clear guidance on, uh, whether there's going to be an expansion, whether there's, um, what number you are on the waiting list, but students are not learning. Um, where I'm a parent of a middle schooler and an elementary school student and they would love nothing more, even if it's just to be able to learn in an environment in a school, whether it be at Silon Soon, that would be much better than what it is right now. And so I really, really would like this board to move resources to expand the learning hubs. And to the teachers' union is, I would love for them to be more proactive in finding solutions and not just give us roadblocks. They, I've heard them say many defensive things at the board meetings, but at the end of the day, they never come with the solutions about how we bring students back in. And so it's getting really frustrated as we're seeing students really struggling emotionally. And I, at this point, now that we're in the purple tier, it's going to be, you know, January is going to come around and, and it's going to be right after Christmas where it's going to be harder and harder to make that transition to school, not because it's not, the data doesn't show, not because the data and the science shows that it's best, just because the politics are stopping it. Study what's happening in Marin County. Please, please talk to the leaders there. School-based transmission based off the county's data is not happening. They're doing a great job. We would have the same standards here. Um, it's possible, we, if worst case scenario, we need to expand the learning hubs. Give parents an opportunity and students to improve the learning and not making a total loss here. Thank you.
Thank you. I'm going to meet you live. And I'm going to lower Julio's hand.
Uh, Ms., Ms. Whitaker, I have a couple of, um, comments to make as we finish. Um, or, or maybe I'll wait if the board has any other comments and then I want to respond to a couple of things I heard.
Any other hands? Parveen, go ahead.
Yeah, so I think it's really important. We did a budget workshop, I think it was like about four weeks ago. It is still, it is on YouTube. We also did one on deferral, so I, I really encourage folks to take a look at that. And if they have any questions, to let us know, we're always here to respond. So it is always a good question, like if you don't have the funds, why are you spending money? The way the, the budget cycle works is we're, we have things we have to spend money on. Like, you know, it, it's, we actually plan our budget before the state approves it because that's what they require us to do. So I know it doesn't make sense to folks, but that's just, and we say that, it doesn't really make sense for us not to know what we're going to get next year as we're planning our budget. But that's the way the state has set up the budget cycle. So that piece of it is really out of our hand. But we can also tell you that when we say, um, for example, that we need to purchase certain things, again, it, it is, it, it is a choice. It, we're not taking away from things in the classroom. What we're worried about is that we should be getting, as, we should not be spending more money that were allotted for that year, but just this is a cycle. It doesn't make sense. I would highly encourage, um, Mr. Trolle, I know, I know him, to sit down with Suzie and me and we can go over things for you so that you have a better idea. But I think you have a really good question. If we don't have money, why are we spending it? So it's just, it looks like we're always behind because it, we are always behind because that's the way the state has set it up. Um, but there are things in our daily business that we have to do. For example, that 1.2 million that you saw, that's a loss. People might say, well, if you lost 120 kids, well, then cut as many staff as you have 120. The reason that doesn't work that, that clearly and cleanly is because of this. Kids don't come in perfect batches. So that 120 is across the school district. So we can't just go and say, really, we should be able to mathematically to say, okay, we don't have this money for this, so we've cut it, but that's not how it works. So it's a lot, it's really complicated. And my response to school opening and hubs, I, I want to make sure, I'll reach out to the person who spoke to make sure that if they need to get their children in the hub, we, um, will do everything we can. And we are actually looking at expanding as much as we can. But I have to say, learning hubs are great for the meantime, but to everybody's point, it's about actually having kids in the classroom. So, and we're, we're trying our very best and, um, we do have some challenges that we're trying to resolve.
Thank you, Parveen. Now this is an action item.
Well, I'll move that we approve the 2021 local control funding formula budget overview for parents.
I'll second that.
Then move in a second and Shane, your preferential vote?
No, that was the wrong agenda item.
Oh, sorry.
The budget, yeah.
I'm sorry. Can you repeat that one more time, Amy?
It's, it's for, it's for the, uh, it's the positive certification of the first interim report.
Yeah. So it's item 8F is what you're saying as we're there. So Gary, if you want to read.
I think she's saying that item E should not have been labeled as an action item. It should be an informational, I think.
Got it.
So I will, I'm going to add it.
You, you already approved that one in the last agenda item, so now we're on the new one, which is 8F, the certification.
I don't remember approving it, but maybe I was asleep hearing that part.
No, that's the, that's the item for LCFF. That we, that you did.
So we're on 8F.
Yes, certification on, yeah, the, the one, uh, Mr. Howard, the E was the one that you approved that, that was the LCFF or, um, budget overview for parents. That was that one. That had to do with the continuity, continuation. But this is the certification of the first interim.
Okay, uh, I don't remember that, but I'll take your word for it. Uh, so I will move approval of the certification of the financial condition for the first interim report.
And I will second that, so we will make it easier not to switch.
Move in consecutive chain?
Yes.
Is there any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes by zero. We'll move on to item 8G to consider the nomination of candidates for the California School Boards Association Delegate Assembly for CSBA Region 7, Subregion B. Parveen, did you want to speak to this item a little bit?
Um, yeah, we have this in here as this is the time where any board member who's interested, um, can be nominated or maybe someone who has reached out to you as well. I haven't received anything. I'm not sure if anybody has a nomination. And sometimes when we have this on here, if we don't have any nominations, we just leave it as, as is. I don't see anybody jumping up and down. And it is after, um, I know that our two new board members will be taking their masters in governance and, and kind of getting more into that hopefully after that, then you have, you know, another opportunity.
Like no takers. And no, uh, recommendations, right? Uh, we have no more public comment. We have a five-minute recess as item 10. Uh, we will come back at 7:36. So please enjoy your break and we'll be with you momentarily. So please enjoy your break and we'll be with you momentarily.
I can't stop.
And to our attendees, we're almost all back, so we will be starting back up momentarily.
Five minutes goes really fast. Goes by so fast.
Gonna have to put like no running signs around the house for safety.
I can be on mute.
I guess the one drawback of coming back to the boardroom is I can't run to my pantry and get a snack.
Yeah. We'll have some snacks for you here.
We will move on to item 11, our annual organization meeting, and I will open our annual organization meeting. I will call it to order. So this is my first time doing this, Parveen, so.
Yeah, so basically, this item is for us to elect a president. Since each year we switch, and elect a vice president, appoint the secretary and adopt resolution, the signature cards and things are just, just order of business that we have to go through every year so that we can sign things. And then we designate board representatives, which is the net, you know, the agenda further down. So first thing is electing a board president.
So you guys know where we're at now is I'm the board president now, and it was out of rotation. We normally do a rotation for equity purposes. It was potentially my last time on the board. And so everybody knows I was unable to take some of the classes that are required to be vice president or president prior to that time. So, you know, there was some delay with the fires and things like that, and I was in business school, and so I was very honored to have the board vote me in. And traditionally, it would have been Gary. So when we do a rotation, there's a rotation to make sure there's equity amongst the board. So I just wanted to put that out there. Dot, you had your hand raised?
Yeah, I wanted to nominate Gary for president.
Is there any further discussion? Then move in second and Shane, your preferential vote?
Yes.
There any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes by zero. Welcome to your new term, President Howard.
Thank you very much. As you say, it's a rotating position among us all and look forward to getting Mike and Dolly qualified through the mid courses and get them into the rotation. And one of these days they'll be president as well. So thanks very much. I would like to ask Dot to make a comment or two here now, if she would. Are you surprised?
Yes, because I forgot. We wanted to say thank you, Lavender, for being a great president. And I wanted to share my screen. And we have a gift for you and whoops. There we go. Can you see it?
Hold on, whenever that happens, I have to move your faces to the right. Oh, thank you. That's very nice of you.
Thank you for a job well done in a difficult time. Yeah, we took a chance on you going out of rotation and we're pleased with the results.
Thank you, and I have to say, you know, we've been in crisis for a long time. And I really appreciate everyone being kind and I mess up. And I'm the first to admit when I make a mistake and I've made a lot of them over the year, but I appreciate your kindness and your willingness to let me not be perfect and, you know, we're all mistakes. I appreciate it. So at this point, is this where Gary takes over?
Yes.
Over to you.
President Howard takes over and then we have to not have elect the vice president.
Yeah, so let me just say one more thing, and that is, thank you, Lavender, for doing a very good job. I thought you were, you're, you were terrific in handling the public and being kind and patient with everyone. And you're right, we all make mistakes and certainly I served as president once before and made more than my share of mistakes during that year, and I'm sure I'll be able to accumulate an even greater number of mistakes this year. So the next thing on the item is to elect a vice president and also a clerk for the board. And I'd entertain a nomination for that. It's also part of the rotation, though. Lavender, would you like to nominate someone?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion to nominate Dot Theodore as our vice president clerk.
Is there a second? Thank you, Mike. So it's been been moved and seconded to nominate Dot as the vice president and clerk. Is there any further discussion?
I'm kidding. I'm kidding.
Is there any further discussion other than Dot trying to weasel out of it? Hearing none, all those in favor, Shane, what's your first, your preferential vote?
Yes.
All those in favor, please say aye.
Uh-oh. I can't hear you, Gary.
You've muted yourself, Gary. Gary, here.
How did I do that? In any way, I was gonna say that we have to change this in the next year. We're gonna require, the state is requiring us to do a roll call vote on every motion. Okay, so congratulations, Dot. I'm sure you'll do a great job. We need to appoint a secretary to the Board of Education. This is traditionally our illustrious superintendent. Is there a nomination? From someone?
This, this one you just appoint. You just ask for a motion to appoint.
There's no motion.
Move then.
Okay, I am moving that Parveen is appointed as our secretary.
Second, thank you, Lavender. It's been moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, Shane, what's your vote?
Yes.
We're all following your example here tonight. Thank you very much. All those in favor of appointing our superintendent as the secretary of the board, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Okay, the next one up is adopt a resolution for the signature cards, as the superintendent said, so we can sign for things. Is there a motion on this?
I moved that we adopt them. Oh, sorry.
Very, thank you, Mike. That's your first one, right? Is there a second? Lavender, thank you. Any further discussion on this? Shane, what's your vote?
Yes.
All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. We're moving right along here. This one gets more difficult. Assignment of board members to the different dates for the Parent Leadership Council. I think you sent out some dates that were draft dates. Does anyone have any, is there any, are there any problems with those? Or is anyone would like to change or anything?
Not going anywhere.
Who is? So is there, I don't see anybody waving their hand frantically trying to change any of those dates. Occasionally, things come up during the year where we do change those, you know, if you need to change, I would say try to find someone to replace yourself and then just let the superintendent and me know, and that'll be great. This is an action item.
Gary, can I, can I ask a question? I'm so sorry, remember signing up for this, okay, and sending it to Parveen? But what, did we get sent back a results of what dates we have?
No, so Ms. Adams, this is not the committees. This is just the Parent Leadership Council. So on the second page, you're just, I think you were assigned to October 20th, 2021. And the Parent Leadership Council meetings are used to be in the morning, but now they've been in the afternoon from three to 4:30. But I know you do teach till probably to till three, so for that date, we can actually, when we get closer, we can talk about changing it to three thirty. Does that make sense?
I I think so. October 21st, right?
Yes, October 20th, but you'll have it, we'll, we'll send you.
You'll send me, okay, fine.
You'll have the list actually in this item, and we'll, we'll make sure you know in advance.
Okay, all right, thank you. I just, I didn't see these two dates. Okay, thank you.
It's okay, no problem. And item G is appointment of board representatives to various.
Did we move and second and?
I didn't get, we didn't vote? Oh, thank you. So is there any further discussion? Shane, your preferential vote?
Yes.
All those in favor, please say aye.
I don't think anyone made.
I don't think we did a motion and a second.
We didn't.
Because, because I interrupted, that's why, and asked a question.
Okay, so similitude is a terrible thing, I have to say.
I'll move to approve, to approve the assignment of board members to the Parent Leadership Council meetings.
Very good, thank you.
And I can second it.
Very good.
Lavender was gonna second it, but whatever.
I think Lavender was trying to signal to me to correct my ways there. Okay, now, Shane?
Yes.
Thank you. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five to nothing. Okay, now we're down to G, I hope. Appointment of board representatives. There's a long list of these. I think everyone sent in their preferences. But we can start down the list.
Yeah, and so, Ms. Trustee Howard, I mean, just saying, I want to say a few words about the list. So we sent the list to you. And there are, there are points assigned. There are some of these committees and these responsibilities that are a little more involved than others, but we try to balance things out. But there's some that, for example, a couple of these things that really require some prior knowledge and experience would be better. Of course, there's no requirement. But I just want to say that some of them are joint, you know, like, for example, ROP is actually a board. And like Max Salsa is a board. Their bylaws and different things, and we've done a lot of work around that, and then just a couple of other things. I just wanted to kind of put that out there, and as you see, Amy has actually sent that to you, and now we have, she's gonna share something with us so that you can see who had asked for, for which committee. So that as you're speaking, she's going to assign the person that is assigned keep there, so we can add all the points, and you could see it on the side. So she's, she's sharing her screen for you, with you for that purpose.
So the first one up is ROP. I'm happy to withdraw my name from that one, being president, so. Dot or Dolly?
ROP?
Yes.
Yeah, I think that's one of the ones I wanted to do, but I don't know if I can do both the Salsa and the ROP, right? Is that possible?
Yeah, I think we would discourage that, you know, those are two different boards and they do require a bit of time. And
ROP and Dolly, you could be my alternative.
Okay, that sounds great. Thank you, Dot, for that help.
Yeah.
That's a good and interesting assignment, and I would suggest, Dolly, even if you're the alternate, you should visit the ROP and get to know the superintendent over there, Linda Granger.
I would love to.
She's a superstar.
Oh, I've talked to Linda Granger before, on phone.
Okay, so the next one is Max Salsa. And that is also a board where we have one representative. where we have one representative in, it's one of the four constituent districts that administer that.
So it's Mr. Howard, it's you, um, and this Adams. Again, it's, it's pretty, um.
Oh, I see, there's the board and there's the alternate. So I would love to, of course, be on the Max Salsa because I've already worked for Salsa. I think I know a bit about the Salsa already.
Um, that's okay with me. Uh, one thing to keep in mind though is this is a board, it's not, you never see a parent, basically, it's a you know, it has all the typical policies and, uh, that kind of thing. So it's a little bit different than what you might have been accustomed to, but you certainly know something about special education.
Okay.
Okay, I guess that one's Dolly.
Okay. And do I know any, do I know anything about when they meet?
Yeah, there's a lot, um, Dolly, there's a lot, this one is really involved. Um, and so is ROP. I mean, there's a lot of time involved. There's a lot of reading and preparation ahead of time. Um, so, and you do have the dates, we'll give you the dates, but the so that'll come to you if that's what you sign up for.
Okay, alright, I will try to do a good job on this.
Okay, then we need the alternate. Uh, you have strong feelings, Dot?
You would have, uh, Mr. Howard, you were the other person who signed up.
Okay, I'll be the alternate then, that's fine. Okay, the School Board Association. Uh, this is usually, yeah, there's a person and an alternate. We have a person who's designated to be our representative there, but the School Board Association invites all board members to attend all their meetings. So I don't think you should feel inhibited to go, even if you're not the person. Mike, that's probably a good thing for you to do, I would say, because then you'll get to know some of the other people. If you want it. Are you there?
Yeah, I, that would be great.
Okay, and I've been the alternate there for years. I go to the meetings anyway because when we, actually, this is one of the reasons we moved our meetings to Wednesdays from Thursdays is we were the only school district that met on Thursdays and we had quite often had conflicts with these county school board associations. So now there should be a smooth sailing to go to those meetings. They're often very good, very informative. Word, uh, the Board Policy Subcommittee.
I can't believe not everybody wants to be on this committee. I just can't believe it.
You guys are interested, that sounds good to me. Anybody else interested in that?
Give us a ear, Dot.
And I have more policies waiting for you.
This is an important subcommittee, actually, uh, because we get, we get policies updated periodically from the California School Board Association who have vetted them for legal reasons. But we still have to see whether they fit Castro Valley's particular circumstances. So it's good to have two good people on that one to really work hard on that. The Center for the Arts Executive Committee, I don't see any names on there, but we usually send two people to that. Did we change that to one or do we still have two on?
Two.
Two.
I'd be happy to step up for that.
You want that one, Mike?
I'd be happy to do that.
Okay, anybody else? They discuss what's going on at the Center for the Arts and the funding situation, the plans for renovations, the activities of the high school, the various high school groups that use it, and also the Castro Valley Arts Foundation has a seat on that committee. Um, anybody else interested in that?
You can put me down.
Okay, thank you Lavender. Lavender's name magically appears. Thank you, Amy. The Ed Foundation, um, they meet once a month. It's a great organization. Um, we have a person who participates there. Lavender did it for a couple of years, I think. I forget who did it before that, maybe Dot. Any, anybody other than Mike interested in that? Very good, Mike. Uh, the LCA, the LCAP Advisory Committee, we have three names here.
I'm gonna pass.
We need one.
I'm gonna pass on this one, so I'm taking my name out.
Okay.
I guess it depends for me because I'm really interested in LCAP, but I was on it before Dot was. So I wanna make sure that Dolly has a chance because it's really important, right? It's a really important thing. But I wanna see if I can get other things on my list too.
Well, you could speak up for ones if you might not have put your name in for, if you'd like. So were you giving that to Dolly, Lavender, or were you still in running?
Dolly.
Okay.
Okay.
Congratulations, Dolly.
Thanks. Um, just make, uh, help me make sure that, you know, I take the appropriate amount of work and tasks. I wanna make sure I do that. But I also wanna make sure I don't overdo it as well.
We're gonna count up the points at the very end here and try to balance out.
Oh, okay, alright.
Yeah. This is where we're at currently. I just panned over.
Lavender's taken a year off. We have to find a couple more for you.
Okay, so before we go to the next one, I, I do wanna say a couple of things about that. So, are we on the ad hoc committee?
We are, hard ad hoc committee, yes.
I'd like to take my name off of the one.
Okay. Um, so this is a committee that I, um, that I have been, um, very involved in because there are some really important decisions we need to make and it is absolutely hugely time consuming. And I would ask that, um, that the two people, and I have offered that same thing to um, hard, that we have people who have, uh, obviously been here before because there's a lot of information that we would need to catch up on. And we're
I'll remove my name.
Thank you. And we'll update you.
Thank you, Michael.
Yeah.
No worries.
Well, we'll say that, uh, over the last couple of years that this board has been in existence. Board has been kept up to date, uh, all the time on this, so you won't miss anything from it, believe me.
Yeah, in fact.
Okay, the equity?
Yeah, in fact, I will, um, set up a little meeting with, uh, the two, um, new board members, so we can update them on that as well.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, the, yeah, thank you. The Equity Task Force. Looks like we have two people on that one, I think.
But there's three, but I, I strongly am advocating for myself as the only person of color on this board to be on this committee.
I'm okay with that. Is there potential that I can get on a community alliance though? Because I haven't been able to have a chance to be on that.
Yeah.
Sorry, we're in one person, correct?
Two. You can have two, you can have two, up to two people on that committee.
Yeah, I agree with Dot. Dot should be on here. Um, so Lavender, you're saying that you, you won't be on it?
That can be on it and that way, you know, I'll put my son's name on somewhere.
Okay, but just remember what Parveen said and that is, Lavender, feel free to attend. Is that right, Parveen?
No, well, I, I just said, because Mike and Dot are on, but if one of them can attend, we can always, we can always switch. Yeah.
Okay, uh, the Revenue Enhancement Committee. Only two names are in.
Yeah.
Um, is there anybody else interested in that? I'm happy to be on it. I'm happy to let somebody else be on it. I think I'm accumulating a lot of points. No one yet?
Well, I'm, I'm on there too. There's two of us, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, but we're there's two of us, but I was just wondering if someone else wants to be on it rather than me.
Okay, I'm happy to take it if you have too many points.
Uh, I have like a lot of, I don't have enough points either, although I am vying for, I do want community alliance if possible.
So, let, let's go down to the rest and if there are too many points, uh, Trustee Whitaker said she would take it. Gary.
Okay.
It might help when we go down.
So that was, uh, okay, so, uh, we just did, which one?
Uh, the Revenue Enhancement Committee so far.
I think we're down.
Yeah, I'm understanding Mike, my, uh, Mr. Kuziak wants to be on it and you're on it at this point, but if there are too many points and we need to switch, I heard, uh, Trustee Whitaker say she would switch with you.
And, and I could switch to.
Okay.
And Miss Adams.
Okay, the Canyon Councilor Advisory Council, this is a half point. Dot, you were the only one who put into it, so I guess it's you. Now, the Community Alliance.
Oh, I went.
Uh, we have two for this one.
I'm happy to take my name off of this list.
I'm, I'm happy to get out to let someone else have, since there are so many people wanting to be part of it, and I've been part of it for some time.
Yeah, and I'm being on the Equity Task Force, I think, is complimentary to this, so I'd be happy to sit on that. I, I will just say, I, um, you know, the United Against Hate work is important to me and, uh, I still think there's opportunities through the Community Alliance to promote that. Uh, we did participate with the United Against Hate Week this, this year, special circumstances, but, uh, I just, just wanted yes, please take me off of this. Um, that's what I wanted to do.
Thank you, Mike.
Yeah, I've been going to these meetings anyway as a community leader, you know, before I was on the board, so I think I know a few of the people there.
Great. And we have, uh, one club, the, we used to have the Lions Club on here, but they have gone defunct, I'm afraid. Uh, but Mike, I'm happy to let you do that if you wanted. That mostly just entails speaking to them once a year about what's going on in the, uh, in the district. They're, they're a good group of people.
They are, and if you wanna be my backup, just in case I can't make that one.
Okay, that's fine, yeah. They're nice guys, so it's, it's a good group.
And, and we're not
Okay.
Um, we don't have any points here, but I, um, but Mr. Howard, you are also the president of Rotary and you do participate in Rotary. I just wanna make sure you get credit.
Yeah, and Parveen's a member, so, uh, and I'd be happy to talk to any of the rest of you about membership if you're interested at all, but, uh, so, um, I think we've got all of the, we've got names in all the slots, we just need to see the totals now.
Yeah. Oy.
Okay, I'm really worried about, that's too big. Um,
Yeah.
So I think
Yeah, you get five points for, um,
Being president.
Board president.
And so I had so, and the hard. And I would be happy if someone wants to be the
What else are you on?
On the Max Salsa backup, is that what it was? I can't.
Yeah, President Howard is on Max Salsa, um, alternate. I can take the ASBA alternate, alternate for you.
There you go.
Great, thank you, Dot. Does somebody wanna be the backup on Max Salsa?
Well, I, I
Someone else?
I think, I, what else is there, what else are you on right now?
Hard, which were, I think I wanna be on the hard thing.
Yeah.
And Revenue Enhancement.
Yeah, the, the problem, yeah, so if anybody wants to take
I could do the Revenue Enhancement to, uh, get a point out there.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
And a, and a part of it, and a part of it, Mr. Howard, is because you're the president, so it's just
Yeah.
The five points just kind of just does that to
Are we, are we Mr. President now?
Well, they're getting, they're getting down to some semi-normal now, I guess.
Yeah, that's pretty good.
Is that reasonable? Is everybody happy? Somewhat, thank you, Mike. Okay. Okay, thanks to everybody. Thanks to, uh, Amy for putting up with us on this one. Um, I guess this is an action item, so with the list we've got, we should have a motion.
Yep.
Can I make a motion?
Go ahead. So it's been, I think Michael froze, but I think he said he moved that we accept the list as it was.
Yes, I think so.
Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you, Lavender. Mike's still frozen there. Is there any further discussion about these? Oh, there he is, he's coming back. You were frozen, Mike. Welcome back.
This is my big moment. Did, did my motion stick?
It did.
Okay.
Uh, so, uh, is there any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say no. Motion carries five to zero. And that completes the annual organizational meeting. Thank you very much. That worked out very well. Um, and we're down to the next item, which is the Superintendent's Report.
Yeah, I, um, updated everybody. The only other thing I would say, um, I, I think I already mentioned, um, several times that we're turning in our reopening plan. I did wanna say, I am, um, as a, uh, part of my responsibility on being on AXA, Association of California School Administrators Board, um, that I, um, I am on an advisory, um, state advisory task for, uh, task force on anti-racism. Um, this is a group from CSBA, CTA, the Education Coalition and AXA. Um, so actually, the, the advisory group in AXA reports to that group. Um, that is at the state, so we, um, we've been meeting and we're gonna continue to meet. Um, to work on some, um, really important work that we need to continue and embark on, um, new things statewide and, um, kind of advocating for legislation and also activities throughout the districts in California. That's the only thing I had left to, to share, really. And then, um, we are, as I said, we did talk about the hubs. I just wanna wish everybody a wonderful, happy holidays and encourage everyone in our community to stick with the rules and regulations. I am gonna put some information out again listing the requirements or the, the guidance from the county health department to encourage folks to follow through and, and make sure that we, um, move this curve downwards. So, thank you.
Okay, so we've, now we're down to board comments. Thank you, Parveen. Uh, and I'm gonna start in reverse order here with Lavender. This is a time when you guys have probably seen this at board meetings before. This is a free time where you report what you've done to represent the district over the last, since the last meeting, or any other observations or activities that you've been in. And you can ask questions here or make suggestions. This is one of the rare times that board members can talk freely, since it's an agenda item. So Lavender, please.
Gary, um, I, in last week, um, and the week before that, we looked at, um, we're getting ready for our workshop on Thursday, so really excited about what we're building out to welcome the new board members and really set our team up. And thank Parveen, Amy and Gary for working with me on that. We had our Teacher of the War Award, uh, Teacher of the Year Award, I, I viewed into that, so yay! You know, so excited for our Teacher of the Year. Um, I know I did more things, but my brain is not working anymore. I feel like now I don't have to have that energy, Gary. I'm gonna give it over to you, if you need to pay attention as firmly as I did as board president, but, um, I just wanna thank you again for that gift. That was the perfect gift, a donation, um, that's really meaningful to me. Um, so I really appreciate that and I wanna wish everyone on the board, staff, our families, our students, our teachers, just happy holidays and hopefully our families, our students, our teachers, just a happy holidays, and hopefully everybody is safe and well, and I know it's a really happy time, and I hope that we're all safe, but we still get to be together in some form or fashion. And wish you all well. Thank you, Gary.
Thank you, Lavender. Michael?
Hi, well, um, what, I want to just thank, uh, everyone on staff, um, Dr. Beats, Ms. Chan, uh, Dr. Ryman, and, uh, Dr. Armani, uh, for welcoming me. It's really, uh, been so helpful, uh, to learn more about our district, and, um, let me just get super personal for a moment and just say what a privilege this is to be here. Um, I, I know that not everyone, this is not my right to be here. Um, this, um, it, I'm grateful for that, and I just want to thank everyone who supported me in getting here. I, I, I would be remiss without, like, just making a shout out to my mom, who passed away over the summer, and I wish she could have been here tonight, and I, I just want to thank everyone who did show up for that. Um, and, and I, I feel really strongly, uh, when I, I think about my biography, about the experiences I went through, that I, I, there's an opportunity to really face some equity issues in our own community, to face our history in Castro Valley, to make a more equitable district that really reflects that, that new Castro Valley that we all know is in this community. So, uh, one area of priority I hope we can talk about is, uh, embracing the new normal. You know, we talk about we're not going right, uh, and I hope one thing that we can talk about is, uh, school lunches, uh, child nutrition. How can we make this reality that everyone gets a, a breakfast, breakfast or lunch? How can we, uh, make that the new normal going forward? And I, I hope that we can have some conversation around that. Uh, I just also want to think about, when I, when I think about this, this community, our Castro Valley School District. Um, I, I have to acknowledge that Vivian Perator is moving on as, uh, uh, Principal at Chavo Elementary School. Um, she has been, uh, the heart of that community and has really, uh, led, uh, the culture there in a positive way, and I, I just want to congratulate her, and so, and I know in our district well in her new role, and I just want to thank her for all that she's done for that Chavo community. That's all, and thank you for having me here, everyone. Thank you.
Thanks, Michael. Dolly?
Um, sure. So, of course, uh, I just got sworn in today, so I couldn't have been representing the district in any fashion. Um, but I have been, um, doing quite a few, like, meetings, kinds of things that I do all the time anyway, as a community activist or leader in Castro Valley. So, um, I did attend the League of Women Voters, um, meeting, I believe. Uh, Parveen, you were probably there, I, I believe, and it was just, um, sort of a holiday party and a reflection on how the elections went, the nonpartisan, uh, elections, you know, went. There was, uh, I went to the Alameda County Democratic Central Committee meeting, and I went to the Castro Valley Democratic Club uh, Holiday Party, where we, uh, a few of us actually decided to, um, drop off some, uh, cupcakes that we made and, um, like some Martinelli's and such, so, you know, to try to make it a little bit more like a actual real party, you know, to a bunch of the people. So I thought that was, that was kind of fun to do, right? Put on the little Santa hat and go deliver those things, so I was very happy. I am, um, very, um, happy to be working with, uh, Gary and Dot and Parveen and Lavender and Michael, and of course, uh, Suzie, Sherry, uh, Jason, and, uh, not to forget Amy, and so many other people here in the district. Um, I'm, uh, very glad to be here, uh, as a board member for the Castro Valley School Board as a trustee, and I, um, want to do a really, uh, be a very good board member and do a good job. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'll, like, Vice President Theodore.
Thank you. Um, so let's see, since the last board meeting, I, uh, attended the Parent Leadership Council meeting, and it was really great to be, uh, there at that meeting and hear about how, how parents and different school communities are still working really hard to, um, create and retain a tight-knit school community despite our, our separation. Um, let's see, tomorrow is the last class of this cohort of the Black Minds Matter. Um, so I'm excited to attend that. It's been such, uh, an eye-opening, um, series of classes to participate in. Um, tonight, I've missed the high school instrumental music, um, performance, because this isn't our usual night for school board meetings. Um, so I'll get to watch that on YouTube later, and then Friday was the vocal high school, um, uh, winter performance. So I think it's so wonderful how hard our teachers have been working to still provide some sense of normalcy, normalcy, for our students and to create these things. I mean, I, I heard my daughter listening to the instrumental music, um, per, performance from here, from my desk here, um, and I know she, it meant a lot to her to have that, and, um, you know, just so much love from me to our teachers for making all of these, um, efforts to bring some normalcy to this horrible situation that we are in. Um, and then, let's see. That's it? Oh, I know, and then there's the, the Parent Leadership Council meeting this week that I'll be attending. So, that's it.
Thank you, Dot. So I'll be brief here. Uh, you know, I think all, or several of us attended the Capitol Advisors' uh, conference on the budget a week or so ago, two or three weeks ago. They're always worthwhile, lots of good information and insight into how the state government is working. I was at the Chavo PTA with Parveen a week ago, and, uh, like Dot, had a good experience listening to the parents there. And be at the Marshall PTA meeting on Wednesday night. And help with, uh, Lavender's preparation for the governance, uh, meeting that we're gonna have in a few days. And finally, um, if you missed the Madrigals on Friday night, they're an extraordinary organization. Uh, they'll be performing tomorrow night for the Rotary Club. Uh, feel free to uh, join in. It's at six o'clock. The link is on our homepage, castrovalleyrotary.org. It's free. And, uh, we look forward to hearing them every year perform around the holidays. So I think that's it for here. I would like to say again, oh, Parveen, excuse me.
Yeah, I just wanted to remind, uh, Trustee Theodore, the Parent Leadership Council, because we switched the one from November um, to December, that there is no Parent Leadership Council in, um, this week. So you're off the hook. But I also wanted to say that, um, if any of you would like to be here for board meetings, um, there is space. Um, so I know the internet, um, is much better here, so just let me know.
Yeah, thank you, Parveen. I will be coming on Thursday, so that I don't take all this space in my kitchen and my family can't make dinner.
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
Just let us know. Thank you.
Well, once again, uh, welcome and congratulations to our two new board members, Mike and Dolly. And congratulations, Lavender, on being re-elected for another four years. Thanks to all the staff for their hard work to get this meeting together and to do all the other work that they do, uh, to keep the schools running as in top shape. And thanks to everybody who's, uh, still hanging on out there. We still have about twenty people listening in. Thanks for sticking with this to the bitter end. Uh, this is our last regular meeting of the calendar year. We do have a governance meeting and on Thursday evening. So I'd like to wish everybody happy holidays. As Parveen said, please, the best thing you can do is obey the rules. That'll get our kids back into school faster than anything, so have a great holiday, and I'll see you in 2021. So thank you all very much for being here. Good night.